I have seven o'clock, so I think I'd like to get started. Louis, if you could just check on Chris and we can get started with the meeting and let me know when he when he logs in, I'd be appreciative.
Okay, well, good evening and welcome to the Thursday special March 16, 2023, meeting of the planning board. We are doing this remote, so I have to read the statement. An important notice pursuant to chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. Senate Bill 3007 signed into law by the governor on July 16, 2022. Suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, C 30A subsection 18. This meeting of the planning board be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. All meetings and hearings listed in the agenda will also be done through remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. At www.sheeshbriema.gov/coronavirus. No in-person attendance of amendment, excuse me, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. To listen to this meeting, dial 1-601-803-2314 and enter the following PIN, 144776248. Please mute your device by pressing star six. That being said, I will do a roll call because remote participation kind of requires that. So as I call your name, please signify by saying here. Mr. Rao.
Yeah.
Mr. Jerry.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Bule is here and Mr. Rotalakis is absent. As far as our agenda is concerned, they're pretty standard, but we're going to pop through them really quickly. Review and approve minutes, we do not have minutes to approve at this time. Review and sign bills is no bills for us to review at this time. Board member comments, Mr. Rao.
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jerry.
I have no comments, thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
I have no comments.
I have no comments either, and Louis, do you know if Mr. McGoldrick has been able to log in yet?
He has not.
You're going to ping him, okay, very good. All right, with that, we'll open up to our first meeting and hearing, which is a continued public hearing for one Greenbrier Drive. Over 55 housing development, site plan approval and special permit. Cypress Avenue Development LLC. Location is one Greenbrier Drive in 169 our Gulf Street. It's proponent here, please introduce yourself and give us a quick, give us an update as to where we're at.
Yes, this is John Graniere, James Graniere Associates on behalf of Cypress Avenue Development Partners. The two partners are on, if you want to introduce yourselves.
Yeah, this is Stephen Blum from Cypress Avenue Development Partners and Lawrence Rosenberg.
So. First of all, thank you for having the special meeting for us, we really appreciate it. And but. One, one question I have before starting our presentation is where we have just four members of the board and we're missing Mr. Rotalakis. We did review the draft decision and we don't have any issues with the the decision. That was that was drafted this, so if there's any large issues that any members of the board have. We'd just like to know that before we we close the hearing. Knowing that we do have one member that's missing and potentially we do need four out of four, so. Give us that courtesy, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, I'm looking at the screen and I see Mr. Thomas's screen has somewhat frozen, so I'm wondering if he has lost connection. So I'm going to reach out to him via text to see if he's having trouble because we can't have another one, not on the meeting at this time. So. Let me just do a quick message to him.
Mr. Bule, he just reached out to me and said he's having slight computer issues, stand by and he will attempt to log back in.
Okay, so while while we're waiting for Mr. Thomas to weigh in on your on your question, I guess we can. Let's hold off on any board member comments until all board members are present. But maybe, Mr. Graniere, I don't know if you have any slides or anything that you can present showing the public the reconfiguration of what we talked about at our last hearing.
I don't, I was anticipating that Chris McGoldrick may have that.
Louis, do you have the ability to maybe bring something up that might be in the Google Drive?
Yes.
Thank you.
Louise is very efficient.
I guess she is.
Especially for these virtual meetings, you need the tech expertise.
Hello, Jay is back.
Back.
Okay, you may, you probably missed, there was a question or a comment that was brought up by Mr. Graniere at the outset of this. Where we are down one board member and we're waiting for confirmation, and I believe you are correct, Mr. Graniere, that we would need four out of four for a special permit approval. The more I think about it. So the question that Mr. Graniere had is if there's anyone on the board that has reviewed what we considered the draft decision, if there is any major issues inside of that decision, he would like to have that brought forth before we go any further. To ensure that he's he's covered on what any any condition, any comp issue somebody may have on the board. So I guess I'll open it up first, Mr. Jerry, do you have any, first of all, has everyone reviewed, I'm sure everyone has reviewed the draft decision. And we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves because we're not deliberating at this point, but we just wanted to understand if there was any glaring issue that that was brought forth in this draft decision, so Mr. Jerry, anything glaring for you?
No, I reviewed the draft decision and I have, I have no major issues.
Okay, Mr. Rao.
Yes, I reviewed it, I have no major issues, there was a couple minor things that I conveyed to Louis and she took care of those, yeah.
Good, Mr. Thomas.
I have no major issues either, everything that we had requested from the applicant, Mr. Graniere, have been satisfied.
Okay, so with that, Mr. Graniere, I think that helps you understand at least the position of where we are right now. If you would, I don't know, Louis, how are you making out with maybe bringing up the site plan? And Mr. Graniere, you can give us a quick overview as to what changes were incorporated.
The largest change, but as you know, in the previous iteration of the plan add fifty-three units. And it was mostly duplexes, you single style units on the site. At the request of the board, it was relayed to us at the preference of the board that we reduce the unit count to forty-eight units. So this iteration revised to reduce the unit count from from fifty-three units down to forty-eight units. And for the most part, the units stayed in approximately the same. What we did was where units that were duplexes, we changed duplexes down to individual units, so. Which allowed us to separate the units a little more, have a bit more separation. And make it less dense than what it was. In addition to that, there was a clubhouse that was associated where you look. Where in the the upper sheet that Louise is showing, right now, it would be if you were pulling in, it's that top unit on the left, there we did have a in that area, but reduction of units simply out to other developers who we do a lot of work with and who have done projects of this size in larger. We looked at, should we have a clubhouse, should we not have a clubhouse? And the the industry standard typically is if you have developments that are sixty units and larger, a clubhouse is is a good thing to have, if you go less than the the issue that you have is now the condo fees with lesser units, the condo fees, monthly condo fees start going up and it starts, you end up ultimately having condo fees that are too high and and they're really not, it's not warranted, so. With that, we we removed the clubhouse, whereas we're down to forty-eight units. And again, that allowed us to separate the units out a little bit better than than we previously had. With that, the road configuration is the same, the the grading is primarily the same, drainage, infrastructure, everything is the same. We, so. All in all, it's the same project, it's just less dense, more separation between units. It'll function as it as it did before, just a little bit more open space. So if there's other details that you'd like me to provide, we can do so, but in in general, that's the long and short of it.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Graniere. I'll go around with the board first, Mr. Rao, any questions or comments based on this new plan in front of us?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, as our other board member, Mr. Thomas mentioned, you know, like they, it's been here with us for quite some time and we requested some changes all throughout the process and looks like they made those changes. The most important being reducing the number of units, so at this stage, I'm satisfied and I have no comments.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Jerry.
I agree in Mr. Rao's comments, I think we've been discussing this for some time, I think the applicants addressed our issues and I have no further questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Obviously, yes, I was the one that, not the one, but one of the, my biggest concern was the density and obviously they have reduced the number of units down to where I feel more comfortable. So we've already, you know, gone on this for a while and I think we've addressed everything else that needed to be addressed, so with that, I am satisfied with the plan as it is.
Very good, thank you. As as the other board members stated, I I'm in agreement that the the applicant has certainly come a long way in terms of identifying and reassuring the board that our comments and questions have been addressed and the reduction is obviously, everybody would like even more reduction, but we understand that this this is actually a reduction that is is fit for purpose for this particular site, in my view. So with that, I don't I don't have any specific comments, questions for the developer. This is a public hearing and I understand there are members of the public that are present. If you wish to be heard, it's been a while since we've done a a remote meeting, so I can't remember if we put hands up before or we've come a long way with the remote meetings in terms of how to how to get a hold of somebody, so I'm sure there's a hand signal available on your site and we do have our hand raised, so if you could just continue to do that and I will call them out as I see them. So I see a Mr. Spellman, could you please introduce yourself with your name and address and then your question or comment?
Yeah, Spellman from Five Cypress Avenue. And I've got a a comment and a question. Question, the comment side, so I've been living here at Five Cypress for the last seven, and we immediately but the the brand new entrance to the to the the community, in fact, I actually grew up on sixteen Cypress, so I've lived here for, geez, going on, I spent a lot of time in forty years. My concern is, and I sent a an email today, a to the mission board, just to get it in the public record about the brand new pooling of water after and I've seen pools form directly behind my property, meaning a big pool of water that never existed before over the last year, so I've got big pooling happening, I guess you'd call it over the fence, up the hill. Where it didn't, or there's always been a large vernal pool, which has grown in trunk and size over time. But we're getting way down my end of the street, that's all just kind of pooling and pooling and pooling. And I'm not, this is, you know, we've thrown in a lot of brand new development, you know, this brand new on Gulf Street, so I'm not sure if it's displacement of those homes or climate change, but I just wanted to get a lot more water pooling, and in fact, I lost a tree last month because it fell over based on the amount of getting, you know, kind of down my property line, so. I'm mainly just calling it out as a concern, you know, it's not something that necessarily would would stop a project, but I just need to get that out there because my worry is that all displacement with the with X number of homes and the roads, even with all the water degradation, you know, I'm worried about having my back, the end of my backyard going underwater, so that's my I turn, and my question is really about the woods behind my property. Bought my backyard, five Cypress directly abutting where the the brand new cul-de-sac is going in the circle. A lot of trees marked at the edge of my property for saving, and I'm just trying to figure out what's happening directly, but only because there's no development there, there's no, I don't think there's any drainage going there, there's no additional, I'm just trying to figure out if that is all going to be clear cut or if it's just going to remain as is. And what's offline too on that specific second question if someone needs the jacket.
Okay, I I understand what your question is and I will bring this back to Mr. Graniere or the developers themselves, this is actually the the reason why nothing has been done is there was an agreement that that where the cul-de-sac is or the entrance from Cypress Ave. I asked that no construction happened until after we went through the planning process, the site plan review of the actual development. And so at this time, I can ask the either the applicant or Mr. Graniere to explain the concerns relative to where the roundabout entrance area is and how the the trees markings and so forth are going to be addressed as well as the understanding of the pooling of water and what, if anything, that can be done while they're under the construction of the roads.
So. Just that big overview, in order to provide adequate access for any development on this parcel, it was required to have a cul-de-sac instructed for adequate access in frontage. So that prompted the design of that around cul-de-sac, which with the with the little turnout is, obviously, where the stub of Greenbrier is currently. And that's going to be extended with, I think it's a twenty-four foot wide, there you go. Roadway, so that would be to to the to the right of your of your house, Joe, or Mr. Spellman. So that would be to the right there where the pooling is, I know that further, I think, south or it would be down the page further in the back, there's an area where the wetland necks down. Keep going, keep going, you have, I think you might have to go to the next sheet. Yeah. And that area kind of in the center of that sheet, there's an area where the wetland necks down and that's kind of where it it channelizes and runs through. And we had a discussion with about this with the Conservation Commission, there has been some beaver activity out there. So there has been some backing up of the water because all of that wetland, it flows to the south and eventually to the the southeast of this property and ultimately under two ninety. But where that little bottleneck is, there has been some beaver activity over the past year or so. And obviously, with all of the the rain that we've had and the thaw and it does cause some pooling. So that's that's what I think the current causes of of some of the the pooling and puddling because there is, there was some beaver activity out there. It all, it was all sticks and it was all something's something's been doing out there, I'm assuming it's a beaver. So I think that might be because of some of the pooling, but during construction, will, when that road is built, they're going to have drainage infrastructure, they're going to have a detention basin. And they'll have some, obviously, associated with that, but that's the only clearing that's best proposed right now.
Okay, so I guess just to expand a little bit on the question relative to the clear cutting around the cul-de-sac. So can, I think the question is the trees that are marked, is the question of those the ones that are being removed or those are the ones that are staying?
You know, I don't know, no one involved with our group has recently flagged or tagged any trees, how long, how long has that tagging been there? Is that recent, Joe?
Yeah, so seven years, and and I did, a crew out there doing the tagging trees that they told them that were going to be saved and they were directly behind my property, so if you look at the five Cypress, which it's just upper part of that page, right back to my property line. There's a fence over the fence, some of the larger trees were marked for for retention, which is great. I've been just trying that big giant box that that exists behind my house where there's no work being done. I'm just, that's going to remain woods untouched? Or if it's going to be cleared, and if it was going to be cleared, why, there's nothing going there?
Right, our project is, our driveway is on the south side of the cul-de-sac, so we're not going to be touching anything. There's work that needs to be done for the cul-de-sac to be installed and the drainage associated with that, but any of the work that we're proposing now, it's on the south side of that cul-de-sac for a driveway. Where this development is, so right, nothing is proposed for for clearing of anything back there.
Okay.
Thank you, I had poured over the plans and I couldn't interpret them, so that that's that's reassuring, and then in terms of the pooling, I think I mainly just want to bring it to someone's attention and make sure it's out there. In the event, and by the way, my secret hope is that the work that's being done is going to create places for these this water to go that doesn't involve some pump running all the time, maybe it'll divert it, it's my secret fantasy, so.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Spellman, while you still have the floor, or anything else, or you all set? I'll say thank you, is there anyone else in the car, you're welcome, anyone else in the public that wishes to be heard at this time? I have Mr. Creedon.
Good evening. Just some procedural questions perhaps.
Could I just ask you to, excuse me, could I just ask you to, your name and address, please, for the record?
Sure, my name is John Creedon, I live at 197 Gulf Street.
Thank you.
Is this meeting being recorded?
I believe it will be, yes.
Yes, it is, yes.
May I ask, why, why was, why is this a special meeting?
The last hearing that we had, I informed the public at that time because of the way that the, this this project's been going on for nearly a year. And the developer, we we had requested the reduction of units and they hadn't had time to get the plan in place for us to review it at that time, and they were discussing whether or not they would be able to do the forty-eight units for starters. Given the fact that this thing has been going on for such a long time, we decided as a as a board that we would have our final or our meeting today to review the the plan and potentially have come up with a a decision one way or the other. And the applicant wasn't in in favor of that.
I see, and and pardon me, the slides that were shown a few moments ago. Those still showed duplexes, are those the 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 plans that were actually?
Mr. Great.
We have a mix, we have a mix of duplexes and single units. With the reduction from fifty-three units down to forty-eight units, we just have more single units than than we had duplexes before, so. That's all, so it's still a mix of of singles and duplexes.
Okay, so those plans that were dated, I think they were February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, those are the the final plans?
Yes.
Okay.
One other thing, I think also that the last meeting, I believe that there were two board members that couldn't attend, so they weren't going to have a forum.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Blum, I I apologize, my memory, it's only been two weeks and I did forget that fact that because it was only a three-member board, they could not have their full hearing or vote done at that time, and we didn't think it would be fair to the applicant to delay them another month if we had the ability to do a mid-month and we were able to get a mid-month in, so thank you for that, I apologize.
Okay. Another procedural question, Mr. Chair, why is this meeting being held remotely?
Yes. Oh, they, Mr. McGoldrick, he's in, okay.
Sorry, yeah, so I I apologize for being a little a little bit late to this meeting, Fort Worth Housing Trust was just wrapping up. So the impetus for the remote for this meeting was because of the attendance, trying to create a quorum that we wanted to make sure that we were able to get everyone, we had a number of members that were traveling that may have been able to attend remotely, were not able to. But I believe also, correct me if I'm wrong, from the applicant's side, I believe they were also potentially going to be needing remote as an accommodation, so that was the the impetus of providing it as a remote meeting rather than in person.
Thank you, Mr. Creedon, another question or comment?
Yes, one, I think, I think one more. To the extent that that it is being held remotely, why was the link to participate not publicly accessible? In other words, you had to communicate to Town Hall requesting the link to be able to participate.
Mr. McGoldrick, you're muted.
Sorry, so we we added in the additional, so the original posting allows for calling in, which is well, sorry. So the original agenda posting included the call-in link, I see that we have a number of people who've called in, that provides full accessibility to accessibility to the meeting. But in terms of of reviewing the the settings, we found that, you know, some people may be more familiar with actually being able to join the meeting via the link. And so we revised the agenda to include that to provide an alternative, simply an alternative way to also join the meeting that people might be more familiar with, really just trying to make sure that we're as accessible as possible.
Mr. Creedon, any other questions or comments?
No, I I think I'm I'm good for now, thank you.
Thank you. I see, Mr. Buttonhagen, you have your hand raised, please introduce yourself with your name and address.
June Buttonhagen, 201 Gulf Street. I had submitted a letter to the planning board and I'd like you to just read it into the minutes. I'd like to get your feedback.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Buttonhagen, I don't know if you had an opportunity, if if you even had the ability. The comment that you had requested for a hundred-foot buffer zone along the property line of 201 Gulf Street with a note on the final plans that no trees had to be cut in the zone has been added as a condition on the draft decision that the applicant is aware of, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you, I have one one additional follow-up.
Sure.
Looking at the overall construction of this site and the plateaus that have been incorporated in the raising of the levels and lower of the levels. There's going to be a tremendous amount of traffic on and off Cypress in Gulf Street, which right now are in very poor condition. And a lot of that is not going to be accommodated by what's the sand and gravel because they are cutting way back. So those means all that heavy equipment is going to be moving from that site all the way up through the center of town or all the way up through the high school. So I think you better. So I think you better have some notes in there that any damage that's done to those roads, which are in poor shape now, are going to have to be picked up by the developer.
I've been doing this for almost eleven years now. I've I've not had that concern brought forth in the past, but Mr. McGoldrick, do you know if there's anything that the town does just as it's it's kind of an understood element that if construction causes damage on any roadway that the applicant is responsible for damage recovery?
Yeah, I I can look in, I I similarly, I I have not seen that as a condition in many of the decisions that I've looked at over the years. I'm not familiar with that being included. I I do believe the town would just normally be able to recoup any damages under normal liability, but I I mean, I can look into that. I just, I'm not sure off the top of my head what course of action. And I it probably would depend upon how the damage occurred as well. It might be more specific like that.
It has occurred. The town has done that in the past. We have one unit right here in Gulf Street, which is the longest going development we've had in this town. The prominent builders and they have been responsible and have corrected the road conditions after they were damaged. So it has been done in the past and I just think that should be noted.
Okay, well, I think we can note it, but I don't know that we necessarily need to have that as part of the decision. I think it's I maybe it's something that we should consider to add to the rules and regulations of the planning board if it's not already defined somewhere. So maybe from now until whenever we have an opportunity to to review all of those, it wouldn't be something that could be handled at this upcoming town meeting, but it could be certainly something that could be added for our future town meetings for and actually, I don't know if the rules and regulations for the planning board need to have town. I think that's something that we can approve ourselves. But I'll let Mr. McGoldrick dig into that, but thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter? I see a Rachel Missall. Please introduce yourself with your name and address, please.
Hi, Rachel Missile, twenty-three Cypress Ave. Just a couple of comments really quickly. One, making people request a link is not adding accessibility. That's a barrier if you're making people request it. So just a comment on that. I didn't appreciate having to request a a link to a public meeting. Number two, Cypress Avenue is getting wetter and wetter. There's a new house that's been built up at the top of Cypress. They're not completely done with construction, but the pooling in front of the house directly next to it. And there's only one house next to it because it's up at the top before the high school. The pooling in front of that house has at least doubled. I don't know if additional drainage will be put in, but the point being, every time a new house is built in this neighborhood, more pooling on the streets and in the yards occurs. And my neighbor was talking about his yard being very wet right now. You can't walk on the sidewalk in front of his house anymore because it is so wet and that may be because of the wetlands or it may be because of the fact that every time a new house is built, the water has nowhere to go. I'm very concerned about what's going to happen with more impermeable surfaces and how this is going to affect this street. This street is heavily traveled because of the high school being up at the top of the street. Seems like half the town goes up and down our road every day during the school year. So I just want to express those concerns and let you know that, you know, if it becomes an issue, that's going to be on the town, I think, to remediate. And so far, no remediation has been done in this neighborhood for the constant pooling. And I don't know if that's something that can be considered in terms of remediation later on. Should it be determined that the building of these units has caused additional pooling on Cypress and in adjacent areas and on people's yards as well?
Okay, I I understand your question. I'll ask Mr. Grenier to expand on this, but my understanding is the post-runoff requirements for any subdivision need to be no worse than what they were at the start. So Mr. Grenier, if you would like to maybe expand a little bit on what what mitigation measures are being done for this particular project to handle the water that's on this particular site?
Right. So a- as you stated, it's required that post-development, that the runoff volume and and rate of runoff that come off of the site after roads are installed and you driveways and roofs that it's no greater than in the the pre-developed wooded condition. So in order to capture that water, first, it's treated, it's captured in detention basins. We have a large detention on the easterly side of the site, the lowest side of the site. That captures runoff from all of the developed areas and it holds it back. And that's up through a one-hundred-year storm event. And any runoff from the site now, the elevation differences from Cypress Ave to the elevation of the development is is I I was looking at my my topographic map. There has to be close to a, we're down around elevation five thirty with this. And the elevation particularly in that section of Cypress, we're significantly lower, probably by sixty, seventy feet. So we're nowhere near, there, there's no water that can come off this site and and go in the direction of Cypress Ave. Everything flows to the east, down towards the wetlands and then into a significant wetland that ultimately goes under two ninety to the east. So with or without any detention base, then there's no way that water could could ever impact Cypress Ave itself. Notwithstanding, we are reducing the the rate and volume of runoff from the site through detention basins and stormwater management. And all that gets reviewed by both the EPW town as well as the the town's consultant engineer who reviews all of the plans for the town just to confirm that our designs are in conformance with with regulations.
Great, thank you. All right. Is there any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, I'm going to make an assumption that we have no more public comments. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Does someone want to make a
I thought Tim was going to do it. I move that we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Rao.
In favor.
Mr. Bule is in favor as well. That being said, we've talked about, we did have a draft decision that was brought forth for us to review. It is a pretty standard requirement. Looking here, I I missed it the last time. I didn't see anything. I don't believe there's any waivers requested. There was some wording in here that we talked about at our last meeting relative to the defined payment in lieu require requests or or special permit that was asked for from the applicant. And knowing that the numbers changed, but they had locked in when they had their application. So the number for payment of blue and blue came in at eighty-seven thousand three hundred and seven dollars per unit with a grand total for the forty-eight units at six hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Other than that, I mentioned the hundred-foot buffer zone along the abutting property line of two oh one Gulf Street with a note on the final plans that no trees to be cut in this zone. I didn't see, or and then also there was verbiage in there relative to the inclusionary fee schedule. And I believe the applicant has reviewed that and it's in accordance with what they had asked for or we come to an agreement with. So it's based on as buildings are being permitted, certain payment of lieu payments would be required at that time. I don't see anything else relative to this. Does anybody on the board have any questions, comments relative to the draft decision? Mr. Jerry?
I have none.
Mr. Thomas?
I have none.
Mr. Rao?
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to for this for this decision.
I would move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision of the planning board regarding the application for site plan approval and special permits for senior housing and inclusionary housing fee in lieu for one Greenbrier Drive and one sixty-nine R Gulf Street, Cypress Avenue Development Partners LLC. Permit number SPA SP dash zero five dash two zero two three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Jerry, I was going to do an eye, raise hands, but okay. So in favor, Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Rao?
In favor.
And Mr. Bule is in favor as well. So that takes care of that. Thank you for your your time, Mr. Grenier and the applicant as well as the public at this hearing.
Thank you very much. We appreciate.
You're most welcome. Thank you. I know, I know it's been a long haul, but you know, with patience comes a virtue, right? So I think we get through here. Excuse me?
If you need me, I'll be at Burton's.
There you go. Have a good evening, guys. I'd like to thank you. Our next item of business is new business. We do not have any new business. Our next item of business on the agenda is old business, which we don't have, any old business and correspondence, which we don't have. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
In favor, Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Rao?
In favor.
And Mr. Bule in favor. Thank you and good night to everyone.
Thank you.
Night.
Thank you. Bye now.